It's like church, you never want to sit up front for all the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's not coming?
So, oh no.
We are not going to...
Oh, okay.
Certified free cash.
Yeah.
It's not still out of town now.
Yeah, she's supposed to be trying to join by Zoom so she can...
Oh, okay.
Both committees have...
Oh, yeah, no, I thought that too. I guess it's...
Yeah, we... That's my understanding.
Ba-ba-da, ba-da, ba-da.
Tony sits there and sends me a text message, "Do this, do that."
No, that's good. That's good. It's eye toes.
I guess I was on the... Yeah, that's... Yeah, I thought that...
Yes, she is.
I'm coming, I'm looking for you. Looking for me.
And he looks back to you before the meeting.
Oh, well, you should have texted me. Sorry. Charlie or kids came over and were hacking popcorn. My neighbor kids. For their field trip.
We've got to open the motions to one that I want to talk to you about just to get a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Then that is, this is an idea I had.
Excuse me?
Twenty K motion to say for...
Because I don't know how long my daddy's...
I want the motions in like two or three seconds so we can discuss it. Okay. And then the board wants you to do it for... Because I can't have a motion if it's you.
No, I don't have them.
There's Heather.
To discuss the possibility of...
No, you think it, okay.
In a constant, it's like in a car.
Saying you're in the backseat.
She's driving.
She's driving?
You're still in the backseat.
Yeah, okay. To do for the...
Whatever the issue was.
For the engineering. I got your...
I don't know, maybe they went to a football game.
All right. Do you want to forego announcements?
Yeah, we... I just did that laundry list.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I guess that'll set. I'm gonna open the motion. You open the meeting at six thirty-two. Remind everybody here, the meeting is being recorded, so as emotional as this meeting I'm sure is going to be, let's all be respectful of each other and listening and as to what we have to say. First question, is there anyone here who can open session before anything else? Okay, we will skip announcements tonight. On the consent agenda to the board, essentially what we need a motion is we want to change Joyce Green's title from interim town clerk to assistant town clerk. This has to do with, for legal purposes, et cetera, for swearing in our new clerk. And this was Joyce's recommendation, so this is what I'm asking from the board in terms of the consent agenda, that a motion to accept that, and that's the reason. So is there a motion for...
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Joyce Green as the assistant town clerk.
Okay, which we can do. Uh, motions...
We're gonna do that at consent, don't we?
Yeah, all you have to do is unanimous consent of the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's the only thing on the consent agenda, so...
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda, appointing Joyce Green as the assistant town clerk.
Okay. Motion made?
Second.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Who was that?
That was Heather.
Oh, hi. You picked a great time to leave town. Okay, we have a couple of motions we have to make before we can actually get to business. And first of all, Finance Committee, if you could open the meeting also.
All right, what time? Let's six thirty-three, and we'll open our meeting.
Okay, first thing we need is a motion to reopen the warrant, to open the warrant again so that we can do our business tonight, so...
I'd like to make a motion to reopen the warrant for October twenty-sixth.
Okay, motion made?
Second.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, okay. And there is another motion to put before you for discussion um, before we can get to the budget. And I will ask Katie if you can...
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to take the twenty K from ARPA for, when, what was it? It was the, the actual word.
Engineering Corporation Bill.
Yeah, the Engineering Corporation Bill.
For twenty thousand.
For twenty thousand, yeah.
For downtown project. Motion made, is there a second?
I don't understand the motion. What do you want to do?
So...
Well, can we, let's get a second, we can discuss it, because then I can explain. This is a motion that I can't make because I'm the chairman, but I will explain it, okay? All right, motion is made and second. This, this came from me. Uh, when I was, when everything was hitting the fan the last couple of days, I was thinking in terms of our free cash, et cetera, where could we come, possibly come up with, and what could we possibly do? And that occurred to me that one of the projects that had been presented to ARPA from Ryan was for twenty K to go to the engineering company that's going to oversee the town project. And my feeling on that is if we do this, this will clear up twenty thousand of free cash, uh, which in the last couple of days we found out we needed even more than we had planned to have to deal with. I spoke to Sandy about this, Sandy's talking to Heather about this. Bottom line is, if, should we want to do this as a board, we can do this. Uh, in terms of the ARPA money, my understanding, as Heather presented it, once the recommendations are put before us as a board, we may, we can decide pro and con on their recommendations. And should we as a board want to be, to take some money ourselves for the town and be, considering the situation we're in, we also can do that too. So I just wanted to put it out for discussion, so I will pass, and let you guys ask any questions or get your feelings on it.
How does this screw up, Chris is here and Heather is here, how does this screw up what you guys have come, and also Susan's here? How does that screw up what you guys planned?
I don't know, Heather, refresh my memory. Did we support that?
No.
You're on mute, Heather.
You're muted.
Heather, you're muted.
We did not. It's not one of the recommended projects, so we would throw our recommendations off by twenty thousand. We had a lot of discussion on this. The first round of ARPA, we also had a, um, request for funding for this project come before ARPA for the purpose of paying out the appraisals for the easements. Um, so we did support that. We did have a lot of discussion, if you remember, for Route sixty-eight. We've now bumped back to the town meeting at least twice, two other times, for the cost of the appraisals, every new appraisal, the work on this. This really should have been a project that was put forward before the town. This is all for that project. Shouldn't, I, I listened to the meeting on Monday night, three quarters of that, the three-hour meeting. Um, I know there was a lot of discussion about this as well. I know Peter also mentioned at one point that, you know, this should have really been something that was funded from the get-go, um, as an article by itself. I still stand by that this should come from free cash, um, and should not be coming from the ARPA piece. But again, as Jeff mentioned, you know, it is my opinion that it's the Select Board's ultimate decision on ARPA funds. So as a full board, if the majority believes that we should fund this with ARPA, then that would be it. But my recommendation is still to fund it with free cash.
So...
I would, I would add, add to that, just to be clear. There isn't enough money to fund both the ARPA committee's recommendations and this new twenty thousand dollar ask. So the twenty thousand dollars will come from the other recommendations that we have made, and the Select Board will have to decide how that's allocated among the other awardees.
So you're saying, as opposed to this, what I'm suggesting?
If you, if what you are suggesting flies, then, then there's a twenty thousand dollar deficit in the ARPA fund that will then have to be made up from the other folks that we have made, that we have recommended awards be made to.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And as I said, I've been wrestling this for a couple of days because it hasn't come easy. And the only reason I wanted to put it out for discussion is in these last couple of days, as we are all aware, we have an additional twenty thousand we have to come up with if a bill didn't get paid.
Right.
So basically, if we got this, that's it, because I know that tonight, one of the major plans is to dip into, uh, free cash.
Yep.
Because we've been backed up against the wall now.
Yep.
And I've already stated my opinion at the last meeting, how I feel about, I hate taking the amount from free cash because next year's gonna be worse than this year. So that's the only reason I put this forth, when I was saying, well, there's twenty thousand, Ryan had recommended this, so I just wanted to get it out for discussion. It's the board's decision, so, but I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I'm not doing this lightly.
Oh, no, just, just so we all know.
Have the people been notified?
No.
No, no decisions yet, no. Matter of fact, that probably won't come up until, probably the seventeenth.
Heather or Susan, maybe you can speak to this better than I can. I'm under the impression that ARPA funds cannot be used to balance our budget. Isn't that essentially what we're doing here?
We can't put the funds into a stabilization account for later on, but you can essentially use it for any legal purpose.
The town project.
To do it with. So theoretically, we could use it for that. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion about whether it's best practice to use it for that. But, and then to Jeff's point, with the twenty thousand coming from the prior year corporation for the audit that wasn't made, I get that it's coming from free cash, but in all fairness, free cash should have been twenty thousand dollars less anyway.
Correct.
Because this was something that was budgeted for, was supposed to be paid for, and was an error on that department head's side for not taking care of it.
Right.
Ed, Ed Blanche at twenty-three East Commonwealth Road. Uh, is it possible to table this to a time later in the meeting, such that you can listen to different alternatives first, and then decide whether this is actually something you have to vote on before listening to other considerations?
Good suggestion. I don't know personally, the reason I was bringing it up first, I thought we needed to decide on it before we started going through. We had a three and a half hour meeting the other night, trying to go through, come up with all of our cuts, and then now we have to do it all over again because of a number of things. So I just thought, if we started with this and it passed or didn't pass, okay, we either have twenty or we don't have twenty. Because Sandy has her proposal as well as Susan, so...
Well, maybe the other, the other alternatives won't take that long to present, discuss?
So you want, you want to hold on this until...
Yeah, yeah.
And bring it up later on?
Yeah, well, Ed, you have some ideas, is that...
Well, I, I do have one idea that might make a difference.
All right, then, let's table it until later tonight, okay? As opposed to, I don't want to call the question and vote on it at this point.
Can't that be part of the discussion we have now?
Discussion is, yeah, the motion is still out there.
Yeah, but what, his idea, be part of our current motion discussion?
I'd rather wait to hear from the Finance Committee and the Select Board as to what, what the proposals are.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And then it might be similar to what I'm thinking.
All right, uh, so you made the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to table it for now.
Later on tonight, okay?
All right.
Is that agreeable to, a second? Okay?
A second.
Any discussion? Everybody agree with that? Fine, we'll come back to that. So the next item is the budget discussion, so Sandy?
Before, yeah, before we get into the weeds, can you just give us a synopsis so everybody in the room knows where we stand, what we need to do, what we need to find, how short we are, what we're using?
So, we have a hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-dollar deficit in our budget because of the Quabbin Regional School District budget being voted higher. We either have to make cuts to each individual department's accounts, or we have the option of using, uh, free cash to cover some of it. We also have thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars in new growth that was not part of Ryan's, um, estimates when he was preparing the budget. So that lowers the budget down, deficit down to about a hundred and fifty thousand, give or take a few dollars there. So technically, we're looking for a hundred and fifty to balance our budget.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The, the accountant's bill, should that be added to the one fifty?
It has to be a separate warrant article because it's a prior year bill. So that will have to, and that will have to come from free cash, because we can't take it from... Um, I learned a few things in the past couple of days regarding the discussions we had the other night. So prior year expenses cannot be taken from the reserve fund. Those are only for current year, um, issues. So the hundred and seven forty that we wanted to take out of the reserve fund for that Palmer paving bill has to be taken from free cash, as well as, um, the nineteen thousand dollar audit bill would have to be taken from free cash as well. Reserve fund is only for current fiscal year issues. So the well issue can be taken from the reserve fund.
Which is also another reason why we had to reopen the warrant, because that will have to be on there.
Thank you.
Um, just FYI, before we get into all the budget stuff, another thing I have since learned, and I gave you all a copy of our librarian's email, the library budget cannot be cut, or they will lose their accreditation. And they ran into this problem years ago, so, um, we really cannot touch their budget. We don't want to see that happen. They would lose CW Mars, what's the new one?
You want to announce one?
Yes, please.
Hi, Chris Barbera, seventeen, Old Princeton Row cutoff, library director. The way it works is there is a certain formula that the state requires in order to fund a library. And we're at that amount right now. We, that's what we ask for every year, because that's how it works. If we cut that money, we lose state certification. What that entails is we lose the state funds that we get every year from the state that helps us do stuff. Uh, we also lose the, um, discount that we get for being a small library as a part of CW Mars. So we have to pay more to CW Mars to be a part of their membership, which allows us, uh, which would be kind of a moot point, because, uh, if we lose state certification, we lose reciprocity. Anyone who has a library card in the town of Hubbardston would not be allowed to use any other facilities that are a library. They couldn't check any books out, they couldn't borrow any passes, DVDs, library of things, all of that would be cut off. All, the only library they could use until we regain state certification is the Hubbardston Library. That happened before and a lot of people were not happy, but, um, that, that's the ultimate thing, is if, if our funds get cut, the, the, there's a really good chance that we will lose state certification. And we have about two thousand people, just under two thousand people who have library cards in town right now.
How much money do we get from the state for the library?
I think last year it was six thousand dollars?
Six or seven, yeah. Closer to seven thousand a year. They receive grants, um, and state funding.
It, it varies from year to year. Um, last year was six thousand. I, I'm not sure what this year is supposed to be.
So, any other question?
Yeah.
Peter, go ahead.
So, thank you. So if you lose certification, does that make you not eligible for grant money?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm gonna guess that that would be the case, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
So was this, was this something we had planned to cut at Tuesday?
I know, yes, yes. It was. There was like four thousand dollars worth of books and materials, I believe, that, that was in there to be cut. So that cannot happen.
No amount, no amount can happen?
No, because she is right at the limit that it has to be at in order to keep that accreditation alive, according to the state, correct?
What ends up happening is, and this is what happened in two thousand nine, is that when you disproportionately cut the funds for the library, the state doesn't like it and they, they cut you out. If the funds are proportionally, you know, we're not out of proportion to the other cuts that are in the library, you know, for the other departments, then they're willing to consider a waiver and understand that there's fiscal hardship, which we would have to prove to the state. The, the, and I, I wish I could have gotten clarification. The person who is at the MBLC that does this is not, is not in this week. If, it, my, my, the question that I have that I'm not sure about is that since we're cutting all the other departments, but we're funding the school department with it, does that throw that disproportionate amount of cuts off? You know, because we're cutting one department to fund another department, I don't know how the state's gonna react to that.
Well, essentially, we started out, we were cutting everybody.
Yes.
So it wasn't cutting just the library to feed somebody else.
But I mean, if everybody, if, you know, the question is that we're taking money away from other people to give it to the school, and I am uncertain as to how the state would respond to that, because are they, would they say, oh, I get that everybody else is getting cut, but you're giving it to another department. Does that throw off my, my proportions for the monies that are getting cut?
Yes, and especially because this town voted for the Quabbin assessment and was not forced to accept it. So I think that the equities do not favor us in that regard.
Yeah. Chris, something I was thinking about, just for the record, I know the library is now being used by the school for the, for the children.
Yes.
Um, they do not have a library in the school itself anymore.
That's correct.
So they're using...
You mean the, the center school?
Yep.
Okay.
They're using the public library as their library. Is there any, um, fee that we're charging the school for this? Is there any, um, you know...
At the time, I, I, I hadn't done that. I suppose we could, we could certainly look into that.
I'm just, I was just curious, you know, um...
Not every, not every grade uses it.
Okay.
Um, uh, right now, it's the third, fourth, and fifth grade, only because the little ones are, it's a little challenging to get them from there to here, so...
Well, I know you're putting in extra hours to be there.
No, I'm, I'm adjusting my hours. I'm keeping my hours in the constraints that I have. I have, I have Gabby, who is a fine assistant librarian, so she, uh, she covers for me when I can, so...
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. I was just curious.
You're welcome.
So I've, sort of, I, I got over to both of you.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to go, or you want me to go?
I want you to go.
You want me to go, oh boy.
I want you to go because you put, you put this, you put this together now, which is different, different from the two things I sent out, so now I don't, now I don't know which ends up here.
Ah, okay.
That's not to take away from the hours you put into your presentation.
Oh, it's, it's all right.
Both of you.
It's all right.
I want that made clear to everybody who's here and watching.
I'm still gonna advocate for my thing, but...
We're putting hours and blood, sweat, and tears into this.
There have been a lot of hours, blood, sweat, and tears. Heather, did you want to say something?
All right, I could say something. Would you like me to, Sammy?
I don't know. Do you want to?
Uh, sh- I mean, if you want to go through the different pieces first, I'm okay with that. I, I sent, um, from the version that you brought over into the drop box under PDF versus the one you most recently sent out, are there any drastic changes, or is that the same one, just in a different form?
Um, there's a few changes, not a lot. Um, no, this is the latest, this is different from this morning that I sent out. There's a little bit. So the total, um, cuts to the budget would be eighty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. Um...
That's this column on the far right?
Yes, those are the cuts. So I made a few different changes, um, after we talked the other night. I also added in the fact that, um, we have said we would pay a new town administrator a salary of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is what it was advertised at. So we have to, um, include that in there. So that was a negative and, and a positive, but only about five thousand dollars difference.
Let me, if I can just ask a question first, further up, where we got, um, the Select Board, fifty-four hundred supplies, and, and the difference of thirty-five hundred to twenty-five hundred?
Yep.
And the thousand dollars is Keep Hubbardston Beautiful?
So the Keep Hubbardston Beautiful Committee was created last year, and they were given a budget. Ryan did not, for some reason, give that a separate line item. When I spoke to him the other day, he said it was part of the Select Board's supplies account.
Yeah.
And as you may know, Keep Hubbardston Beautiful was set up for Earth Day to promote, um, cleaning up the town, and they were using the money to purchase signs, T-shirts, things of that nature. So my suggestion would be to cut that, use the signs from last year, you know, adopt them, have everybody wear the same color shirt. Does it have to have, I don't know. That's just my suggestion.
The, the reason why I'm bringing it up, and Heather and Chris, you'll correct me if I'm mistaken, but I thought this was put forth as an ARPA request, which we refused because it was going to be a line item in the budget. So if we cut it now, I don't know.
Right, that is a correct statement.
I don't know what's, I don't know what's happening.
Okay.
Okay. I'm throwing it out there. I'm not, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be there.
I'm just, I want everybody to know what the, what, what happened.
We're trying, I, I'm just trying to make the cuts where they hurt the least to our departments.
Oh, no, I under, I understand. I just want context for everything. That's all, that's all.
Yes. So, um, without going through each line item, I know Chief, um, Hayes has to leave, so I wanted to let him speak as to my budget cuts. Um, I've run by him. I am suggesting we, um, cut three thousand from the call wages for the Sunday coverage, as I explained that to you the other night. I also spoke to him about cutting his medical supplies budget, the two thousand dollars. And there was a three thousand dollar cut to, you know, there was another two thousand dollar cut, that's what it was. A total of seven thousand to the police depart, uh, fire department.
Fire department, yeah. My recollection was we were only gonna cut two, we weren't gonna cut four thousand from supplies. It was gonna be two thousand for the new supplies.
And that's only five thousand from his budget. So what I do with the other two?
Oh, the other two is listed there, but I don't, I don't know why.
One's medical supplies and one's medical supplies, yeah.
Well, because you told me I could do that.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, one, one's out of, uh, fire, full-time wages, three thousand.
Yeah.
The other one's fire supplies, two thousand, and the other one's ambulance, other, supplies, two thousand.
Yes, and you can live with that. Well...
Yes.
Is that gonna, and that will not affect service?
No, so, well, yes and no. I mean, all the cuts, it's like, if it was one time, then it's fine. But the next year, if we're gonna cut even more, then you're, it's gonna, you'll feel it, but it's not affecting personnel, so... The full-time wages is, I believe Sandy explained to you, is that I budget a certain amount for the weekend coverage on Sundays. The two people that have been taking that shift are significantly under what that average pay is. So it saves about three grand in that. And on top of that, not, they're not gonna work every Sunday throughout the year, and we have trouble filling those shifts, so there'll be a little savings there also. Fire supplies, that's new equipment. So we won't be able to buy as much new hose or new equip. Like, what we try to do every year is, there's something that breaks down, we have to replace it. And then there's some years where we make it through the year and we actually have a little bit of money. You might be actually buy an additional piece of equipment that you normally wouldn't be able to. So that's what would happen there. And that's the same thing with the ambulance, uh, supplies. There's another line, a twelve thousand dollars that pays for all the medications, bandages for the ambulance itself. This line here is the same thing for new replacement equipment. So if we have something that breaks, on the smaller side, but costs a few grand, we're gonna replace it out of this line item. Or at the same time, if we don't have that issue happen, we have a few thousand left at the end of the year, we might be able to buy an additional piece of equipment. So it should, it's not, the ambulance will still have Band-Aids when it's chosen of.
I know. It's gonna have more than just Band-Aids.
I hope all I need is a Band-Aid.
Yeah. That, that's what those lines there reflect, so, yes, we will survive with them cut.
Okay.
Great.
Does it, does it interfere with your coverage schedule? When you were mentioning on the Sunday thing, does that mean we would not have coverage?
Well, there are Sundays we don't have coverage. If one, like, it's one of those two individuals, they've been filling, one of the guys has been filling that shift for five years, Mike Parker, he's been doing it forever. And then I have a guy recently who's been picking up that other shift. But like I said, they're not going to cover every shift, so some of those open up, and we sometimes fill them, but sometimes they won't throughout the year. Plus there, I, I use an average of twenty-one dollars an hour for... Plus, they're, I, I use an average of twenty-one dollars an hour for that position. Those two gentlemen make less than that, so there's a savings throughout the year, even if they did, they'd fill every shift.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where that comes from, so.
Okay.
Anything, any comments on either group on that? Questions or anything? Okay, go ahead.
Any questions, Chief? Okay. Um, so we'll back up a little bit now, but, um, so I did a five thousand dollar cut to the, the reserve fund instead of ten. Um, I don't feel comfortable cutting ten out of the reserve fund. The accountant, we've cut her travel, um, and her supplies account last year was two hundred. It went up to five hundred this year. I lowered it down to three hundred. Kind of some wiggle room in between there, um, to take care of that. Because something else I learned this week is anything that was voted at town meeting is a capital project. We can't unvote that now. Um, that's been approved, so we can't unvote that. Uh, so there was five thousand allocated to the tax title research for, um, a parcel of land, um, in Hubbardston that the state would like to take over. So what I did instead was I cut what I usually use in tax, for tax title to record my tax title leads. Um, I've cut three thousand out of that. Um, I'm on a wing and a prayer, hoping that I am down to, um, as of today, I'm down to eighteen unpaid twenty-two real estate tax bills. Um, so to record those at the registry of deeds would be approximately twenty-five hundred dollars, and then I would have to advertise that also as well. And I'm anticipating a few more payments before.
So you don't have enough to begin with?
Well, I would, 'cause I would have.
Get three.
I would have.
Or, excuse me.
I'd have two here, um, and I would just, I would ta, have to take a little bit from somewhere else.
You have two.
Okay, but could, that's what this two is, right? And then you would say the twenty-five hundred though, is what you said, right?
Yep, I would probably need a total of twenty-five hundred, yep. I would take it from somewhere else, my expenses or something to cover that.
Yeah.
And still do the work that needed to be done for the state to take over that parcel. And the town clerk, I did cut, I had talked to Lori before she left. I cut six thirty-five out of her services account. Um, she wasn't, she couldn't remember why it got upped so much, um, so I'm acting in good faith that it really wasn't needed in cutting six thirty-five from there. When I spoke to her the other day, she also mentioned that her, um, early voting, she has received over five hundred requests for early voting, mail-in ballots, um, that she has to mail out. Each ballot is ninety-nine cents to mail, so there's five hundred dollars right there already spent in postage. She anticipated at least another hundred and fifty because we have mail-in voting until November first. We do get some reimbursement from the state for, um, that. I don't think it'll be enough to cover everything, but, um, so to cut any further from that budget ri, is not realistic, is what I'm trying to say. Um, economic development, we talked about the other night. We've just cut all four thousand out of there. Um, building and maintenance. So here again, on a wing and a prayer, I'm cutting six thousand dollars out of the utilities and maintenance, as I said the other night. We have a new hot water heater. We have a new furnace in this building. We have, um, the police department has new, uh, heating and air conditioning units in there. So, um, fingers and toes crossed that nothing else goes wrong i- um, in the buildings, um, for that purpose. So, um, I did cut that. Now to the police department, uh, Ryan had, Chief Kujer had spoken the other night about the fifteen thousand out of wages. I took that cut. When I spoke to him the other day, um, we also discussed, right now, there is no, um, detective. And a detective would normally get a fifteen hundred dollars stipend, and he does not see hiring a detective in the near future, so we could take that fifteen hundred dollars stipend amount as well.
On top of the other one?
On top of the fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we make clear to the people who are here, who weren't here the other night, that, that is not the wage of any person that is working. That is a position that is not filled.
Being filled.
So it's money that is not needed. I don't want, we are not cutting people's job wages, okay?
Right.
All right.
Um.
Well, it's money that's needed. It's just something that when we have to make these type of cuts, we can give up.
Yes. Exactly.
As opposed to more important.
Yep, we've been through fire and ambulance. Land use, again, um, the building commissioner is a part-time position. We're able to cut twenty grand out of there. I also cut the land use assistant, um, down to five thousand dollars. That is someone who, um, we've u, we've used that for meeting minutes, um, for planning board, border health, zoning board, um, to do lots of those things as well as, um, you know, used it to fill in for other pos, I don't wanna say wages, but yes, wages for other fill-in type of work. We also have, um, our, uh, planning board members, no, not planning board. Is it planning? No. Help me out, Heather. Um.
Board of Health?
Board of Health, no.
No, Concom.
DPA?
Concom. Apparently, they go out and do inspections, which I was not aware of, um, and they receive a stipend for doing that, so that would also come out of there. So I took that out of there. Emergency management didn't touch. Animal control, we can't. The four thousand, we took out of the tree warden for the, um, outside tree services. That does not include what needs to be done as part of the town center project. That is included in the, because there will be some trees cut down for town center.
But that's included in the money for the project already, yeah.
But that's included in the project. Um, so that takes care of that. Um, DPW. Uh, I've talked to Travis. We have had many discussions and, um, what I did, and he doesn't know it yet, but I.
Now he does, now he does, hold on.
I took five thousand dollars out of the road maintenance and equipment account. I was asked not to touch the services account because that is for things like line painting, um, the beaver, population control, whatever they do with that, um, crack sealing. Am I right with that? Go ahead, Travis.
There's a lot more that comes out of that account. That account was raised thirty grand for a reason. That was because I've been behind in the negative every year with catch patients this year. I was luckily, luckily came underneath it compared to what it's been. Uh, line painting, I didn't even do all my line painting because, yeah, that was gonna go over, so, um, quite honestly, the money that was put in it was for a reason. It wasn't just a, for fat.
No, I know.
So, uh, just out of curiosity, I had a exhaust mitigation that was supposed to go into the DPW and that, the quotes, because of everything that has escalated in cost, it costs forty thousand, forty-three thousand dollars. So I can't do it. I don't know if you can use the twenty-six thousand on the exhaust mitigation, 'cause there's nothing out there that I can afford to buy twenty-six thousand dollars for exhaust mitigation. So that's there. The excavator.
Was that a capital item?
Where, where is that?
Yeah.
That was a capital.
That's a capital item?
It's already been approved.
So that's.
That'll go back into free cash.
Next year.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, on the next year.
So then, obviously, the excavator wasn't sixty-three thousand dollars. It was forty-nine five out of, uh, fifty thousand, so there's five hundred left in that.
Right.
That'll be next year.
Yep.
The, um, I don't know what you're looking for for percentages. I, I mean, Ryan put out a, a thing there for, you know, back in June, asking us if anywhere from five to twenty-five and where it was coming from, and mine was all supplies, so I mean, I just said less roadwork, 'cause that's, supplies is pretty much that. My fuel bill, which they didn't even put any money in that last year, in that line item, which is supplies, and right now, I'm at forty-three percent, where I should be at thirty percent in my line item. So I mean, I've been in the negative in that in a couple of years, and not spending some money in my other categories allows me to have it go over. But, uh, a lot of stuff that people just don't see.
Absolutely.
So I mean, I don't know what you're looking for out of it, but there's nothing that, uh, I mean, I looked, I've been spending time on it, uh, the, uh, what I had sent to Ryan on the budget for the services was for the catch basin and line painting. That was the, the upgrade there.
Okay.
Travis, what about this winter? How, how are we looking in terms of your, the budget for you?
Uh, salt is at ninety, ninety-three or ninety-four dollars a ton, as it was seventy-six last year. Uh, so I, we, we got like three quarters of a shed, pretty good, stocked up there, but.
Presently, we, before we even start, okay?
Presently, yes. Yeah, I usually try to get it topped off until then. We, it would've been topped off, but like usual, we get one little storm at the end, and that's why it's down where it is.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, between that winter budget, I mean, that's, that does some winter fuel, that does the diesel, um, it does my plow blades, it does any repairs that I need, does the salt. So I mean, a lot comes out of that just for at one sixty. Um, so I mean, I don't know what you're looking for. I mean, for me, just, if I would, had to trim out of the supplies, I said it'd be, well, the coal patch is obviously my winter, and that's, and, um, if I had to, I'd have to trim out of that. And the hot mix, so I, I would say ten out of my coal patch. I mean, that's leaving me thin, and then it's, uh, five in, um, hot mix, which is the, what I tried to put on the roads before winter, so I don't have to spend as much in coal patch, which has worked out well. Um, and then road materials, which is gravel, uh, riprap, if I had a walk, road washout, that type of deal, uh, winter time. We have, uh, like last year, it was real soft, so I mean, the, the dirt roads are a mess, so I have to use material to fix them. Uh, so I mean, that's where it comes out from, so, um, I said five in that one. So I mean, you got twenty there.
Well, Sandy's only looking to take five total on this, on her budget plan.
That's being nice.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So the five out of the road maintenance and equipment, is that manageable?
I don't, it, yeah, that's fine.
Well, yeah, 'cause you were off, you were off, you were talking about twenty.
I just said twen, I just said twenty, five, five.
Yeah, you just said twenty. What if we did, what if we did fifteen?
Okay.
I don't, I mean, it's gonna hurt the, you know, roads.
It is.
Roads.
Yeah, but we gotta drive on the roads, and people have to get the, use the roads.
Everything is.
I mean, now that those people stop blowing tires, they hit a hole, they're gonna be looking for the town to pay for it.
It's not even, it's, it's not even that. It's that we'll have a pothole, we're hitting them also.
Oh, absolutely.
So that, that means my equipment budget goes up.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then I got tires, I got everything else. So I mean, it, it's a ripple effect. I get it, we're in a bad position, but I mean, we were already, we've level funded for the past three years.
I know.
And everything's gone up, so I mean,
Yep.
I think we're done pretty good with what we've had, and, uh,
Absolutely, no, no, no.
And, uh, take your morts, like.
Absolutely.
Great job, Travis.
No one's questioning that. What do you mean?
We're like killing.
Can I just ask a question or make a comment? So this budget, which makes about eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of cuts, still would then need about sixty thousand dollars of free cash to use?
Correct.
So, cutting five or ten still is u, like, it still is using free cash, so I think really ultimately, the discussion is, are we gonna use free cash or not? Because if we're not, we still have a ways to go in terms of cuts, but if we are, then this budget would be fine, or, you know, we're, we're arguing about a few thousand dollars of, of free cash usage when we're already using. We're, we've already decided to go ahead and use it.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and the thing we have to realize is, um, whether we use free cash or we slash these budgets, that's gonna lessen the amount of free cash we get next year. So we are going to, either way, we're hitting next year's free cash, um, and I think that's something, so we either hit our budgets hard and take the free cash that way, leave what's there in free cash, or we do some kind of combination of the two. What I will say is that slashing our budgets, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we already seem to have a problem with morale here. We seem to have a problem with keeping people here. If they have less to work with, they're gonna go somewhere else.
And.
And we've got some really good workers here, you know, and I hate to see that happen at this point.
Absolutely, that's why I don't think we will get more than the eighty-seven thousands cuts that you've made here. And then the discussion becomes, you know, we live to fight another day and talk about a two and a half override for our next budget.
Absolutely. I agree.
Um, but like that value, whether it, you know, like, ten thousand or fifteen thousand or five thousand for, for this item in the DPW still doesn't get us the, you know, we, we need another fifty or sixty thousand dollars to get to.
That's right.
That we're gonna get to, so then we need to talk about, we're gonna use free cash.
Right.
The actual amount, whether it's sixty or sixty-five thousand, is still a relatively small amount, but we need to prepare for next year, which at least we have time.
Absolutely.
At least we will have time to, um, because it will be a dif, very difficult budgetary year for us.
Yep. It's gonna be bad.
Well, yeah, and it's a relatively small amount if you're looking at the eight hundred and six thousand, but once you net out the capital expenses and everything else that we've got,
Wait, yeah, okay, absolutely.
which, which is a calculation that I'd like to go through and see how much is left at the end of the day.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Nope. Abs, absolutely. I know we have like five hundred for capital spending, five hundred thousand for capital spending for, like.
Mm-hmm.
Four oh four.
Four oh four.
A four oh four or something, yeah, yeah, so.
Four oh four, yeah.
Yep.
And then, uh, and then these other, these other.
And this aren't including the thirty-nine thousand?
Eight, that's right, and these other, right, these other expenses that have cropped up that need to be, that need to be handled.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
But, yeah, there's no way we're gonna cut all of this from this budget.
Yeah. No, there, it.
The only way to cut everything from this budget is to cut personnel.
Yeah, and why not?
And, and we have decided we aren't going to do that, so, so, so.
Absolutely, right.
Yep.
So the exercise we're doing now is just trying to mitigate the amount of free cash we're gonna have to.
That's right.
Right.
Which I still think is a useful exercise.
There's no way we're not going to use free cash and, and, so probably close to the number you said of sixty thousand dollars or something.
Right.
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 As we go through this, we're just trying to mitigate that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, right, I, having, having conceded the point of the use of free cash, I still think it should be minimized.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, and that's what I'm trying.
Yep.
Trying to do as much as possible, um, and as I, one of the handouts that I gave you was, um, this is the amounts of free cash we received over the past ten years. And the average of those ten years is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. The fact that we received eight oh six this year is huge. It's almost double what, what a normal year would be.
And my understanding is that's because we were able to use ARPA funds for certain expenses, thereby giving us more access to free, free cash?
Part of it was, um, I think I had sent out the free cash breakdown, um, DPW turned over a ton of money because they were down two or three people last year. They're now fully staffed, so they, that was that. Um, you know, same with the town administrator because his position was re, part-time while Ryan. Um, you know, same with the town administrator, because his position was re-part-time while Ryan was away. Um, it was a part-time position versus a full-time position, there was a huge savings there as well. Um, so that's why our free cash was so great this year, but it was anything but a normal year too, so, um...
But if I, if I understand correctly, these numbers are cumulative, in the sense that the free cash from twenty-twenty...
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the free cash from twenty-twenty-one isn't an additional three-hundred-and-twelve thousand.
It's a balance, it's like a balance.
That's right, that's right, so free cash from twenty to twenty-one actually dropped, that's, that's my point.
Right.
Yes, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so they use...
So we had, so we had a bit of a windfall in twenty-twenty-two that is not going to be repeated in subsequent years.
Right. Right.
Yep. Yep. That's why we need to cut some, and do some of these cuts, but we can't just demolish our different departments.
No, we don't want to demolish the different departments, no, that's right.
Yeah. Exactly. Sorry. Yep.
That's right, I still think we can look, we, I still think we should have some conversation about some of these numbers, but, but, yeah, but agreed.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely agreed. Okay.
You wanna continue, or, or...
Yeah.
Josh, is that, what did you, are you saying it's a waste of time?
Oh, no, I was just... No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it's a waste of time, I'm just, sure, sure, I, I mean, but, you know, if, if Travis needs
I don't mean it literally that way, huh?
Money for the DPW, otherwise, you know, if, if we cut too much and then we're back trying to use emergency funds for what we ultimately need, we're sort of, we start, we start getting in circles, we're using a sort of essentially what is the same money, it's just whether it carries over to the following year or not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it, well, again, it, it, as I said at the last meeting, it depends on how lucky we feel.
Right.
Yeah.
Because, because we could be in the position where Travis is fully funded, and we're still dipping into the reserves, so we don't know.
Right. We don't, and, and that's one of the reasons why I didn't wanna use free, um, the reserve fund is for emergencies that come up this year, otherwise, we have to go back to a town meeting. If there's some large issue that comes up that can't be paid for, and we can't use the reserve fund because there's no money left in there, we have to go back to town meeting, and that's an additional expense.
Mm-hmm.
Travis, I know we can't predict the winter, but, but based on the last few years, would you be anticipating realistically
Like predict the winter?
Coming back to us for a supplemental somewhere?
I'm only saying for this year, I, you're probably gonna see me as a good chance of it, 'cause I'm at ninety-something dollars or something.
We have to be aware of that too, unfortunately, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, everything we do down there is, is real stingy, I have every, every truck now has electronic spinner, and they're all calibrated, it tells me how much goes down, they're all trained, they know what to put down, and what types of welder to put it down. I mean, everything we've got is to the top-notch of saving, and which we have, because last year was the only year I asked for one. So I mean, and that was just, what, thirty that I asked for, so this year, I'm only saying that because of how much the salt.
No, I, I totally understand, and you guys have done a remarkable job, I just threw that out because I, every year, we face a supplemental
And diesel, and fuel. Yeah, yeah, no.
Because of the weather, and that's additional expenses that we have to anticipate, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so Travis, you agreed to the five thousand dollars, okay? All right, let's, let's progress through this here, so we can hear some other people's suggestions and ideas before, uh...
So the only other, um, thing left is the three thousand that was left in Worcester Regional from our assessment, um, to take that.
Nope, you missed a few.
I did?
Yep, top issue.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, senior center.
Yeah.
So to cut their supplies budget, six hundred dollars, um...
Five forty-one, yeah.
Hopefully, um, that wouldn't hurt them too bad.
Have you talked to Claudia about that?
I have not talked to Claudia about that, um...
Well, they've spent some of that money too.
They, they had spent most of their services account, and that is for, um, their software,
Right.
and their dues and things like that to belong to certain associations.
Right, but they've also dipped into the fifty-four-hundred account from, uh, from the September actuals.
Okay.
So they have nineteen thirty-two remaining.
Okay, so to cut six hundred is still doable?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then we talked about, um, parks and recs and that solar...
Trash compactor.
Whatever it is, um, cut it from that out of their budget, um, so that would be a five-thousand-dollar savings there. Um, the Worcester Regional, the three thousand, and then, um, unemployment, we're on a wing and a prayer, but I'm saying, you know, we can cut three thousand from there and hope nobody files. Other than that, I can also tell you, um, that I received the new rates from Quavon for health insurance.
That went up.
They're going up five percent in January, so that will be affecting this budget as well.
And that is not part of the budget that was passed, that the town voted to accept, this is an additional, so...
So where does that show up, I guess?
Well, we have health insurance, it's at the bottom down here, we've got a hundred and sixty budgeted.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that's gonna work out, but we will wait and see.
Okay. Do we know what our actual, do you know offhand what our actuals were for last year for health insurance?
I don't, but I can tell you that...
What currently now?
We had leftover last year, but this year, I think I have three or four more employees on health insurance than I did last year. Um, I know, um, we have a new hire in the police department, he's on the health insurance. We have, um, DPW, the new, a couple of their new guys went on the health insurance. One that hadn't taken the health insurance before came to me, and his wife got a new job, and so they're on our health insurance now, so...
All right, so there's been some changes.
There've been a lot of changes since last year, so it's kind of a moot point, um, so...
Um, I can, um, last year, we spent a hundred and forty-six thousand on the insurance, so we only had thirteen thousand left.
Okay.
Um, and with all of the costs of all of those people that, um, Sandy just said, we'll definitely go over the one sixty this year.
Great.
Excellent.
Full of good news.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say about what I recommend changing to the budget, Kelly?
Um, the, the only thing I have is, um, on the, uh, liability insurance for this year,
Yep.
um, our, the insurance for the liability isn't just for very insurance, there's different liabilities that we have to pay. Um, and their bill came in this year at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and we had spent, um, we have about six to seven thousand dollars more in expenses that we're gonna need for, um, for that liability insurance, so I don't know necessarily if you wanna cut that six out of there, because that money probably is really gonna need to be moved to the liability insurance.
Okay. Cut the si- cut the six out of where?
Well, she means between the Worcester Regional and the, um, unemployment.
On the board.
Oh, I see, I see.
'Cause they're, all the nine-hundred category, um...
Oh, right, oh, okay.
So, yeah.
So cut it there and put it towards liability?
So it's a, so it's a wash.
That's what she's suggesting, yes.
So we're down six thousand in your price, or take six thousand more from free cash?
So it's a wash.
So we're down six thousand. Yep, so that would be eighty-one fifty.
Oh, what are you gonna do?
Yep.
Should fill it up, it fills up, I mean.
Yep, there's just nothing we can do about a lot of these things.
No, no, it's beyond our control.
Yep.
Ah, God.
Yeah. So...
Not beyond our control, we had a balanced budget and everything was fine, if we...
Well, you know, you know what I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Insurance rates. Well, it went the other way, we gotta make absolutely clear to everybody that...
Yeah. Absolutely.
What's driving this exercise we've been going through here for the past four nights?
Correct. Yeah. It's been moving up.
Okay, next.
Sue.
Your turn.
Ed, you wanna speak?
Yeah, Ed Blige, twenty-three, East Calipso on the road.
Yeah.
I gotta apologize for not making the last combined meeting with the full committee and the other boards, I wish I had been there. I'd like to also say I'm very pro-education, 'cause all three of my kids went to Quavon, all went to great high school, had great colleges, but at what sacrifice? I've spent probably fifteen years on the finance committee as chair for many of those years, and have been through this exercise before on more than one occasion, and, um, it's, it's not easy, but, um, proposition two and a half isn't gonna go away. So if one budget goes up ten percent, all the other municipal budgets are gonna sacrifice, and I don't need to explain that to you, 'cause you know those numbers, but we have to balance the funds. Some things that I have seen work in the past, that we don't run into the situation again, is we should make sure the Quavon Regional District gives us their budget by the end of May, um, end of March, so that we have time to do these exercises without having to run extra town meetings, which has cost us money. Quavon Regional, I think, has a capacity of twenty-four hundred kids, and I remember we went from twenty-four hundred kids down to twelve hundred kids, just due to population and that, and that budget never went down, even though we were at half-capacity in the school. Anyway, um... Here's a possibility as a recommendation. It's a possibility we could put three items on the town meeting that we're gonna have, 'cause the warrant's not closed, right?
We just reopened it tonight, yeah.
We just reopened it tonight.
Okay. One, I think the first one could be a proposition two and a half override for the hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars that the school needs. I gotta tell you, in all my history with Hubbardston, very few overrides have been passed. But let, let the people know what their, where they're gonna spend their money and why they should spend their money. If they're that dedicated to vote that whole school budget, then, all right, now we got a funding situation, and we don't wanna cut town services, so I think it would be wise that number one, we should put that in as a first warrant article. Secondly, maybe a combination of proposition two and a half and some free cash, and give them an opportunity to have a little bit of balance between two and a half and free cash. The two and a half, which I normally would not recommend, I'm recommending that you do this now, is because every year, we're gonna have the same thing. So if the town wants to make a concerted effort to make sure the children have their funding for education, and that's the way they wanna spend their dollars, then give them the opportunity to do and a half, do a two-and-a-half override, so that we take care of it this year, and that hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars continues on for following years. Um, I don't know what the combination of free cash and a two-and-a-half...
Can I just be a... Can I speak to the two-and-a-half override?
Sure.
We investigated that, um, that had to be...
Pass by two-thirds?
Um, no, it has to be an election.
It's a timing issue.
It's a timing.
It has to be a vote, the voters have to vote on it.
So it has to be on a ballot?
It has to be on a ballot.
Yeah, it's a, it's a two-step.
The time after the, um, town meeting in August, we looked into that, and the time had already expired for it to be put on this November ballot, that's how far out the state has to be notified. Um, and so looking to do it at that time and put it out there, we would have been looking at a two-and-a-half override vote sometime in December or January, and now we're into bad weather, we're also into a time of year, um, where people just don't wanna come out, and so that is why we decided not to do the two-and-a-half override at this time, because we figured we would not get the voters out to the polls to act on it.
Well, whoever shows up, shows up.
So it is something we're considering.
But we need a, you have to have a quorum, I mean, that's the point, right?
Yeah. Well, the other thing too, is if the people that show up voted down, and we just spent all this money to have an election,
That's exactly.
And we're half, and we're halfway through the year.
And then the, to have it voted down anyway, we're still at the same spot, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a timing, it's a timing problem.
Exactly, exactly.
So it was just a timing thing.
Well, I, I think then the third line on the, uh, little warrant would be to be presenting the budget cuts that you've had now.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
But at least it would give them three options, one, for the total amount of the school budget as a prop two and a half, the middle one would be a balance between free cash and that, and the third one would be what you're gonna come up with tonight as a, as a dollar figure.
The other thing with the prop two-and-a-half override is our final budget would not be decided till after that vote, which means we could not set a tax rate, and we cannot send out tax bills, so...
It's complicated.
We would be creating another mess, because we would have to borrow, and that would just cost us more money.
That's one of the reasons why that budget has to come from the school in a timely fashion.
Oh, they've tried that before.
I remember, I, I remember doing that before, but I also remember, uh, as chair of the, of the finance committee,
We've been arguing that for several years.
That we got the other four towns in the Quavon District to meet with the Hubbardston Finance Committee as a group of finance committees in a timeframe such that we could talk about our individual town situations, and that was before they would present their budget, so that we could go to them and tell them ahead of time the situations that the town were in, so that, you know, you go through the, I've seen the normal process every year, give us a bloated school budget, and then, oh, look how great we are, look what we've cut out of it, and that's just... Well, I don't wanna use that word. Anyhow, um, I will, I will, as a member of the, uh, of the Lions Club, I will ask the Lions Club if they might consider doing the, uh, budget for, thousand-dollar budget for the Keep Hubbardston Clean,
Mm-hmm.
because that's a community service project.
It is, mm-hmm, okay.
And that's something that, that we could give consideration to, and I'll pose that at the next meeting and see if they're willing to do that.
Okay.
It's too bad that we can't get two and a half involved, it's not possible, huh?
No, not really, not really.
But I think it's inevitable down the road, it's inevitable, we're, what we're facing, our backs are, it's inevitable.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, the thinking is to, is to start working that up now for next year, but it's, we're too late, we're just too late for this year.
Thank you for listening, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue?
Well...
Let her rip.
Cuts, that's right, the cuts I cooked up in the wee hours of the morning, um, which is when we get up on the farm, um, are different from yours, obviously, as we discussed, some of yours are more, uh, aggressive than what I proposed.
Really?
Yeah, so, which, I know, which was fun and interesting to see, but anyway.
I know, that's surprising.
What's in the water, Matt?
I know. Font is larger, that means two pages, kids, do you wanna pass that around?
So this is a revised thing from what we did the other night, too?
It, it is, because I had put in capital, I had put in capital cuts, and that's a no-no, that's what we learned.
Paste on the chin.
Those, that's the first page that's gonna go around, and the second page is canceled. There comes the second page.
Take one, pass it on down.
Because, because it was too small the last time, so now you gotta...
Hey, I could, I could read it.
I know.
I could read it.
So could I, these old men, what can I say?
Susan, is this what you sent up with the saphenone?
It is.
We have extras?
Derek, they should be making it, oh, for everybody back there, no, no, but you and I can share, and I can give the, oh, this is, oh, there's two extras.
There's, I made for the...
The volume heads, etc.
Oh, I, there's two ones, yeah, there's two extras.
A couple extras, two extras, yes.
Oh, okay, good, all right.
I've got an extra two, I printed it in.
Okay, good.
This is the second page?
Yep.
It's the second page.
Okay, thank you.
Travis, bother, Ryan, did you guys get, want to leave?
This is page two.
What am I, yeah, so what we've got, yeah, page two.
They're still, they're still getting the...
Page two. Oh, okay, oh, all right.
Is there any more page twos?
No.
Do you want me to, I can make some copies?
Yeah, why don't you take mine and make some copies?
Oh, she's got, she's got her own, yeah.
You got the right page two, okay.
Yep, I do.
I need page one.
Yep. Page one.
I'll just send it right there, you know how that goes.
We need two, please. Oh, I need page two.
This is page two.
All right, everybody.
So this goes together once.
Did you guys get to page one?
They need two.
They need two, I need two. I need, I need two page ones here and one page two there.
How many page twos?
One there.
You got the page two?
I need, we got, we got two. We need one.
Ones, okay. You guys, the page two.
We gotta cut to the chase. With my proposed changes, we need about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of cash.
Page one?
Everybody's all set?
Because I come up with a hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts. Yours are different. I mean, and, and obviously, the, the, you know, two of the ones that I, I continue here is the cut in legal. I know what you said, but the cut in legal and the cut in the, um, the reserve fund.
Also the library, right?
The li, yes, the library I had in here and I now understand that that, that can't hold. So that would have to come out. I had made, um, I think probably some of the other line items like, like, um, the town administrator expenses, the thirty-five hundred I had cut to twenty-six, twenty-five. You cut that to twenty-five hundred because of the Keep Hubbardston Beautiful thing. So we've got, you know, so some, some of these line items are the same with yours, but the same line item, but a slightly different number. Um, I had not given the tree warden the haircut that you did, so, so there was that. And, uh, but I gave Travis a bigger haircut, much bigger haircut than you did. And much bigger than he asked for, which, which we could all, would also back out.
Could I say to one item?
So, yeah.
Sure, Josh.
Under the, like, uh, the town's financial management policies, um, that were approved in two thousand and eighteen, there's Section D, the Finance Committee. Um, it says the target balance for this line item shall be zero point five percent of the annual operating budget, which it seems self-serving being on the Finance Committee, but that would be about fifty thousand dollars. So cutting it down to, to twenty-five is half of what the target would be based on sort of our own financial management policies. I, I don't know if I'm, you know, yeah.
Right. Which we've, which we've honored in the breach anyway.
Which we've always, historically, we've only made thirty-five thousand, um, historically, but it, it gets it even lower. Even farther away from our goal.
That's, that's right. That's right.
Have we ever had money left over?
We almost always have money left over.
Probably not this year.
Yeah, not this year.
Well, we'll see. I'm still feeling lucky.
I think you're the only one on this table.
I know I am. I know I am.
Fox was or something.
Somebody's gotta feel lucky. Um, so that's kind of, that's kind of the highlights here. I mean, I think, uh, and I'd also cut, I'd also done the haircut to snow and ice, which level funded it, which I thought was legit.
In light of what he has said about salt, the price of salt alone, um, I don't think that's something I'd touch.
Right. Yep, yep. So, and then the unempl, and, and another example, then the unemployment, this last line item here, you cut that by three and I had only caught it by fifteen hundred. So we have, you know, some differences in those, in those line items. But by the time you back out, um,
Bottom line's almost the same.
The bottom line is gonna be the same with these, with these other adjustments. If we're gonna, if we're gonna make Travis whole and then the library has to, has to remain the same.
That's right.
That's pretty much where it's gonna, that's where it's gonna shake out. I still thought it was worth looking at because we could still, maybe, to, to your line items, like I said, look at legal and look at the reserve fund. Those are the two big, those are the two biggies here.
Yeah.
Um, and-
My thing with legal is that-
I know.
There is so much going on. I, I just-
Well, how much have we spent on the legal so far this year?
Yeah, we started with seven years.
So last month's bill, last month's bill was nine grand.
Was nine grand? Okay.
Because there's pending litigation going on.
Where, in what stage is the litigation?
Um, just beginning from what I understand.
So complaints have been filed?
Changes every week. Every day, it seems.
Oh, no, it would, it would, but I'm just, I'm wondering has, has things, okay, so it's litigation in the sense that a complaint has been filed and it's in front of an agency or a judge.
The Attorney General's, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and there's actually two different complaints.
There's two of them? Okay. And they're both pretty much at the same stage?
Not gonna let up.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I was, I was just gonna say that, you know, I wouldn't, I, I am a hundred percent on board with this whole thing. I wouldn't touch this. Um, we already know these two things. One person, you know, is going to, I think, have a longstanding relationship with the town that's going to cost us funds, um, unfortunately, that aren't gonna be able to be handled with two simply by, um, our insurance carrier. So we're not gonna wanna touch any of that right now. We know there's a lot of things coming, including what's currently on the docket for, um, planning a CBA so we can be sure we can go to bill. Well, I wouldn't touch that money. If anything, I'd ask you, but I wouldn't subtract.
Yeah, I have to agree with her.
Yes, so do I. Again, we're gonna be short.
Thank you, Heather.
What is, um, what is the town's exposure on the litigation? Can you tell me that? In terms of dollars?
I think if, if, if they were, if someone were to sue us, insurance cover that, we would just have to deduct it. The problem is this is all either set up the public records or injunction to repeat. Um, and insurance carry does not cover those, uh, legal fees for us for even a payment. I mean, if there's monetary damages that are attached, definitely get involved. But because we're not dealing with direct monetary damages at this time, they don't get involved, so we have to pay them monthly.
So it's pure, like, legal back and forth.
So, all right, so, so the insurance doesn't cover costs of defense?
Not with the only, the only outcome is the injunction for a remedy.
I'm sorry, I couldn't use that.
When it, when it comes, you know, if there were the damages involved, then yes, it'd get involved. But the other thing is too, it's not just these two pieces going on in the debt, it's the fact that we've been relying much more heavily right now with things going on on single lines. You know, unfortunately, that's not cheap.
Yeah, because this is, again, now our, what, second special town meeting, trying to fix this budget. And we keep going to legal to make sure everything's correct.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, we're just to-
The warrant has to go to legal. They will be at town meeting, I mean, just to pay for that stuff, um, as well as, we have a joint meeting, zoning board.
And we have a meeting coming up where they were dealing with one of the problems.
Yeah.
I see.
And legal will be involved in that, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot.
By being present, so.
Right, right.
We're gonna need more money for legal this year. Sure.
That might be the reserve fund.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna be short.
Obviously, we have to be very careful what we're saying, so.
No, I know. I'm trying to be careful of my questions.
Absolutely right. And I just wish I could.
No, I know, I know. I guess I'll have to run for something then. So I can get all of, all of, all the stuff. Well, I mean, these are my suggestions and they all stink and they all hurt and that's the way this is gonna be.
I think I would interject. I would be very hesitant with the increased cost of everything at this point of trying to cut the reserve fund. Because if you do that and then we have some sort of big expense and we don't have that money in the reserve fund, then you have to schedule another town meeting. And again, there's more costs. So I think at this point, you should err, you know, on the side of caution about cutting that because you need to have that money available, um, in case something does happen. I know that you've had it and given it back over the last several years. But with the economy and the way things are going right now, one huge expense could, could take it all. So I just, that would be something I would just, um, want you to think about.
I'd sleep between the two. If they're, if they're roughly the same dollar amount after we back out the ones that we can't use, I super appreciate all the hard work both you ladies have put in, but I'm gonna err to the side of Sandy's just because I think it protects us better between the legal and like that kinda stuff. And it took out some different funds, like DPW and stuff like that.
Right, right.
I just, I think we should, I, my personal two cents is we go with the one Sandy drew up.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm totally comf, I'm comfortable with that. I wanted to offer this up. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, that's on one of my little squares here at the bottom. I was looking at the June warrant and we have a borrowing authority. And I quoted it from the res, from, it's, it's from the warrant Article Six. In the event that the treasurer must use additional cash reserves to fund both operating costs of special projects, warrant Article Six allows a treasurer with a select board's permission to borrow from future revenues in order to make all payments. Then it went on to say, this has never happened in Hubbardston, but it nearly did last year with a school roof project. And I might submit that it is happening right this minute. And is that something that is worth having a conversation about now?
To borrow to make this?
Borrowed?
To borrow something? Or, yes. To buy, instead of, my suggestion is to preserve the cuts, but instead of dipping into free cash.
No. Um, you can only borrow that if you have proven revenue that is coming in that you know specifically. It has to be a specific revenue. Like for an example, if we didn't get the tax rate set and we had a bill, um, we weren't able to mail the tax bills and we didn't have the cash flow, once the tax bills would be nailed, we know for sure that revenue is coming in. Um, or like Chapter Ninety, if, you know, we know that reimbursement is coming in to cover that loan, then you can do the borrowing. But for this type of a thing, you can't borrow, um, to avoid using the free cash.
So the, so the future revenues that, that is mentioned is actually revenues coming within that fiscal year, but it hasn't hit in time for you to use it to pay your expense?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Understood. Thank you.
Brings us back to the point, I think Josh was brought, brought up and I brought up in the beginning of the meeting about free cash. Because that's obviously where we're all at now. Because there's still an amount.
Right.
So it's a question of, that's a decision we have to now discuss and decide how much, how little. There's still, uh, a motion on the table. It's been tabled, but we can revisit on that, the proposal that I put forth. But I think that's something we need to deal with now, everybody, in terms of
Right.
what's, what's the feeling in terms of free cash? Because what's the figure now we're looking for?
Well, I'm just trying to figure that out because we're gonna take six off of this one.
Roughly sixty, sixty-seven.
Eighty-one.
It's gonna be eighty-one thousand fifty of cuts. And then we're gonna be-
Yeah, it'd be eighty-one fifty, right.
Yes, my cuts would be one, would be eighty-three. Eighty-one fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that takes in nineteen also? That, the extra nineteen?
No.
No, no, that has to be a whole separate thing.
That's a separate one article.
No, that's a separate thing.
But that has to come from free cash, right?
That's right.
So I'm simply saying, in terms of our total, what, what are we gonna hit the, it is free cash with?
Oh, that's true. You had it. We're gonna figure that out in the end.
It's about sixty-eight thousand of free cash. If, so we started with a hundred and eighty-three, two eighty of a deficit. The new growth was thirty-three, four twenty-two, so that left us in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. And then if we made eighty-one fifty worth of cuts, that would leave sixty-eight, eight hundred basically for that.
And then we add the nineteen.
And then we add nineteen, and add nineteen and more to that.
Sixteen, eight oh eight, yeah.
Okay, and then add nineteen more to that for the, for the unpaid all that.
Correct.
So just about, around about eighty thousand, about eighty thousand.
It's an eighteen, because there's the- There's the audit and then there's also the engineering. I thought that's a thirty-nine total.
We're debating whether they're gonna take it out of ARPA or not.
Oh.
Right.
That's, that's the motion.
That's why I brought it back.
Oh, and then there's the one oh seven four, has to come out of free cash as well.
And then the one oh seven.
Yeah.
Um, that, yes, so that is what we're looking at. So that rule is-
So would it be proper to come back to that motion and have the board act on it and then come back to us?
I'd like to-
Before we do, before we do, I have one more ask. And that would be to do the free cash analysis and start with the eight oh six, two eighty-nine and figure out what's left after we deduct the capital and the, and this other ask and figure out what's left.
Okay. I had done that.
Okay.
So we, so-
All right, so it's eight oh six, two eighty-nine?
Yeah, minus four oh four, five hundred, minus thirty-nine thousand. If we do both the audit and the engineering.
Well, yeah, let's, yeah, let's pretend we do both.
So that leaves thirty, three hundred and sixty-two, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay.
Three sixty-two, seven eighty-nine is left in free cash?
Yep.
How much?
About three hundred and sixty-two thousand is left in three, in free cash.
And then we're devoting about seventy of it if, if we then use seventy of it.
From the eight hundred?
That's right.
Kelly, question. How much do we usually have left of free cash?
Seven eighty-nine?
If we use some, do we use some of what we get from free cash every year?
Yeah, usually we have some carryover. I don't know the exact amount, but we never use all of it. So, um, it's not like it dollar for dollar rolls forward.
Right.
But there is some of that that does go into the next year.
That's mine.
Right.
Okay.
Except for the twenty.
That's if.
All right. And do you think the, if we?
So we're gonna have about, we have three hundred and sixty before the seventy thousand is applied?
Before using free cash for our operating budget.
Right. And then the concern with the operating budget is there ain't gonna be much free cash rolling, rolling.
Okay, so this number is before taking that number out?
Three sixty-two is before.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanna go through the math.
So we're essentially using twen, about twenty percent of what we have left.
That's right.
To fix a hole in our operating budget for one year.
That's right. And then the concern with this operating budget is that it's so tight.
Sixty-eight thousand would be taken off of this.
There isn't gonna be any free cash rolling forward. So we're gonna be stuck at that number.
Yep. And the other thing is too, then that drops us down to about two ninety of free cash, which, again, our financial management policies would say that we wanna keep three to five percent, which would be over three hundred, yeah.
Three hundred, yeah, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars.
So roughly eighty thousand more. Again, right?
Yeah, the sixty-eight, eight oh eight, and then the ninety.
So this, yeah, that-
Yeah, that's actually eighty-seven, nine fifteen.
So that's the button with free cash, which is why they can such a stink about it.
Before we decide on the other motion.
No, no, but I think then going into like the next annual town meeting in June, that's the dire situation.
That's right. That's right. It's here. It's here.
All right. And that's, just drives me, I just-
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, if it's proper at that point, then I would like to go back to the discussion of the motion
Yeah. Yeah.
The board was just talking about and to see how you feel and, uh, you're still in the discussion stage. So if there's more comments coming from you, feel free to make them. And then we can hold a question and you can vote on that proposal.
Jeff, can you just refresh my memory on which motion we're on in this, on the one earlier to take the funds from ARPA for the twenty thousand?
Yes.
Or is it a different motion, I guess, something?
No.
No, yes.
Is it the one Keating?
It's, it's the twenty K from, from the ARPA to be used to fund the, uh, engineering oversight of the te, town, uh, center project.
Okay.
That's what you wanted to know, right?
Yes, yes. My position has not changed. I still believe we should take the money for cash.
Understood, understood. Okay, so I'll pass it off to the board again.
Not that I have, not that I have a vote or anything, but I just wanted to say that you've already made the commitments to the different people for ARPA and several of them are local businesses, um, so-
No, no, this ti, this round, no commitments have been made because they haven't been presented to the board yet.
Okay, all right.
So.
So I just wanted to be sure that, you know, that you're not gonna, if you use that money and have to cut somewhere, you don't wanna have to cut one of the local businesses, so.
Well, I don't wanna cut anything, but.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to. You're gonna have to.
Right. So, you know, people are going to get hurt.
Because that's who, because that's who got it.
We're, we're all hurting because of this, so we're just trying to make the bleeding stop. So, any, any other comments from the board?
I had a note in, um, Sandy's as we went through it, uh, with the police budget. But there was an additional fifteen hundred dollar cut. Did I, did I, did we count for that or did I mishear that?
No, I did. It was under stipends and allowances for the police department.
Right.
Um, that was a detective stipend because we don't currently have a detective.
Right. So I don't think you worked that into the numbers. You just subtracted the six thousand.
Oh.
No, that was already in there.
Oh, no, that's already included in this eighty-seven. The only cuts we did were the extra, these two, three thousand,
That's already included in the eighty-seven.
The fifteen hundred is already part of this yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So any other questions or discussion on that?
I think, um, not on like that, but obviously it was part of it, uh, PJ Keating bill there. That was on escalation, um, on-
um, amount that came in later on. And it was news to me when it came because we had paid the asphalt bill. Um, it's, unfortunately, Mass DOT doesn't put their liquid asphalt numbers at about mid-month. So I'm sure once they saw it, how much it went up, they jumped on hitting us for another hundred and some odd dollars. So I mean, that came way later and I would've paid it. Honestly, Dennis had showed me and I'm like, yeah, that's news, and then I looked at it, it was escalation, so.
Farmer paving?
Something that came later, yeah.
Farmer paving.
Yeah, yeah, farmer paving.
Okay, uh, all right, then I'll call the question on the discussion and we'll take, board will take a vote on that motion. All right. So in favor of the motion to take the twenty K, uh, to be used for the financing of the engineer firm for the town, uh, center project, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed?
Opposed.
Shit, I don't wanna be the type right now.
So it's. No?
I, I just, I, I don't think either way works. Because I've watched the ARPA meetings and I feel like most of them were pretty much dead on for what they were using, but I don't wanna deplete our free cash either.
Why they pay us the bit much?
Yeah, I know, I hate this, I absolutely hate every second of this, um.
That's right. That's right. What if you split the difference?
I was just gonna say, there's the option of ten and ten too.
Why don't you just do ten and ten?
Where's the other ten coming from?
Ten from ARPA and ten from free cash, instead of only nothing.
Or take ten of the twenty?
Yeah.
Well, that would require another motion.
No, I know, but it, what's, then, what's the sense of the meeting, is everybody kinda want to that or is it still not happening?
Yeah, cause I, I might say. Yeah. It's your motion originally, so if you want to amend it and present it.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna.
I, Jeff, I think we just voted on this motion, Keating not voting unless she wants to go back and vote, the motion will automatically fail.
Cause it was a tie, yeah.
Then there, you just declare a fail and ask for a new motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote neither, I'm gonna remove myself from that one.
All right.
What's the word I'm looking for? Um, excuse, thank you.
Excuse.
Excuse.
Yes, thank you, abstaining from that.
Okay, so that motion then is, has failed, is there, is there a new question?
Um, yeah, I wanna put a new motion.
Okay.
Not that I wanna do ten, but I think that would be less painful to some of the ARPA people. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we use ten thousand dollars from ARPA and ten thousand from free, free cash to pay, what are we paying?
Is it free cash?
Yes.
ARPA and free cash to pay the twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand.
Okay.
Town center thing.
Twenty thousand for the town center, um, bill for.
Engineering.
Engineering, yes, engineering rule.
Engineering.
Okay, is there, uh, motions made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and second, I'll open up for discussion. Any comments?
I still maintain my prior position.
Fine, thank you.
I know, it's just more palatable, I just. Yeah.
Isn't, I mean, isn't really what the ARPA money for, supposedly school, one of the reasons schools' costs went up is because of reaction, reacting to COVID. And this is what the ARPA money is supposed to help the town out with, the local governments with e- extra expenses related to the COVID.
Oh, absolutely, I remember when it first came out and, uh, I happened to be in Ryan's office and we were talking and he said there, he mentioned the town, I can't remember the name, but they just took the entire ARPA, was given to that town, fourth thing for the town. Now, of course, they just took it.
Yeah.
So yes, it can't, well, and, well, we've taken a half a million dollars for Lombard Road, you know.
We're.
Right.
Right, I know, I understand, we have used it, I'm just saying, that was one of the purposes of, one of the purposes of it.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it was.
That's right.
But the, the last rounds, if you watch them debate back and forth on the videos, cause I watch all the videos, apparently I have no life. But, um, they, but they, they, they all, you know, all the ARPA committee members had their points and they did come to conclusions that were not easy, but I feel like most of them were pretty good conclusions for what money we had. You know, because there was gonna be people left hanging out to dry. And it was inevitable because we were only handed so much and you know that's gonna happen regardless. So I feel like the bulk of them, I think they, the ARPA committee did a decent job trying to figure it out and I just hate to take ten grand from it. Um, to use.
Did you wanna say something?
I just was gonna ask a procedural question, so if the ARPA committee puts forth all of the, their recommendations in full as they have them now, then the select board at that time would be deciding where the ten thousand dollars would come from?
The select board has a final, uh, decision on the, on the recommendation.
So basically, you'd be making the ten thousand dollar cut.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right.
Technically, we could take all the money.
Correct, well, that's right, yeah, yeah, you could reject all of our recommendations.
Could we not? We could, we could take all that ARPA money. For our issues right now, if we wanted to. Wouldn't be a nice thing to do, but the option is there.
You can't, you can't really do that because.
Why can't you?
I understa- let me get my thought out.
All right.
I understand you cannot use ARPA money to balance your, your budget. Now, I'm not an expert on this, I'm sure Heather knows a lot more about that, but maybe she can speak to that.
I agree with Katie.
Thank you.
No, he, she's, she agreed, you can't just use it to, to fix the budget.
No, we can use it to pay engineering fees and a lot of stuff like that.
Can you, can be used for town projects.
Yes, it can be used for town projects, that's why I think maybe the fifty-fifty split.
Town projects. Yeah.
This particular line item, it can be used for, correct?
Okay, all right, any other discussion before we bring this to a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the question. Again, we will, um, vote for a ten, ten split. Uh, ten from ARPA, ten, ten K and ten K from free cash. That's the motion that's in front of us, okay, everybody ready?
Okay.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Heather?
That's it.
Said no?
That is it now?
Nay.
Nay?
That is a nay.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion's passed, okay.
Then we'll have the fun task of trying to figure out where.
So this, so now let's get to the free cash, cause that's.
All right, so what's our new number for cash?
We're gonna leave it at eighty.
Very much.
Yeah, well, so that's thirty-seven, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine before we talk about using anything for the operating, for the budget.
Two eighty-two. Okay.
They just added the N, so.
Okay.
And then if we use the sixty-eight thousand, which is now nine hundred and fifteen, cause it includes that hundred and seven dollar bill, a little bit of that.
I live in forty cents.
Yeah, mhm.
Um, that gets us down to three hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars remaining free cash after.
Okay.
That's with this, this latest, right?
That's with, that's with everything sort of that we have used for budget to pay for everything, yeah.
And whose budget are we?
Basically on Sandy's.
We're going with Sandy's.
Okay, that's the, is that something now we can make a motion on? Are we ready to accept?
To approve, I, I guess you have to accept that budget.
Are we ready to accept the budget?
With, with, with the adjustment, with, with your six thousand dollars.
With the adjustments.
The six thousand, yeah.
Yes, with the six thousand dollar adjustment, so it's eighty-one thousand and fifty dollars in cuts.
That's the only change that can be taken from that.
And this would be a vote for both committees, correct?
Yep. To recommend this basically at, at, is that what that is?
Me. Town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
So does it, does the motion have to come from us, or can it come from you, Susan, meaning your, your committee as far as accepting?
Or does it have to come from both?
Well, we, we would be, we would be making the recommendation.
Of both. Okay.
And I think that you, by recall, what the warrant says as well, it, it is, it is recommended or put forth by the select board.
It usually says submitted and recommended by the select board.
The, the select board.
Recommended by, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Now, yes, now I would like to deliberate with my finance committee members as to whether we are going to recommend this budget, are we?
I would with the stipulation that at this special town meeting and at our next annual town meeting in June, we need to very clearly explain to every single voter, one, what happened with the budget. Um, because I think it was a mistake to approve a new QRSD number without reconciling the budget at that time. But two, what that means for the long term in terms of the sort of hole we've put ourselves in and how we're gonna dig it out, which includes using a two and a half override for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four.
So my suggestion would be that we offer our recommendation at town meeting and I will speak to those things. And that's what the warrant would say.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, but I think the message has got to be delivered to the town that, you know.
Right, exactly, but I, but.
As opposed to simply giving them a final figure that, oh, we, we.
That it's come.
But that's why I don't, that's why I don't want.
We bailed you out of it again, the town's gotta know, everybody's getting hit.
Right.
Right, but I don't want to have it say in the warrant that we recommend this budget because we, because I don't. So, uh.
Yeah, none of us are happy about that, right?
And, right, and so I think, I think then perhaps we can phrase it that way and then have a presentation.
Okay, so then can we take motion, have the motions to accept a town administrator's, uh, budget recommendation? Budget, as she, yeah, as.
Well, I think, do we, why don't we take a vote to, why doesn't somebody make a motion to say that we'll make our recommendation at town meeting?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
You want me to make a motion?
Just Sandy's budget as presented.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Yeah, yes. I'm gonna make a motion to, um, put forth Sandy's budget as amended, the six thousand dollars, to, um, a total of eighty-one fifty and cuts and sixty-eight, eight oh eight in free cash to be used for Article One.
And what was the free?
Is that, did I do it right?
What was the free cash?
Gosh, is, are, were the numbers right?
Free cash was sixty-eight, eight oh eight.
I think, yeah, cause Sandy and I had the same, we had the same.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, eight oh.
Sixty-eight, eight oh eight for free cash and the total, um, for cuts is eighty-one fifty.
And free cash. Eighty-one?
No, but it's sixty-eight, eight oh eight plus the hundred and seven, it's sixty-eight, nine, one, five of free cash, cause we're using, are we, are we not counting the hundred and seven dollars?
Yeah.
That's a separate, that's a separate.
Yeah, we, a separate, okay, a separate, so we're essentially, okay.
Just the budget.
We still have to, we still have to take care of that.
Right, just for the operating budget, yeah.
Sure, okay, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
The operating budget.
So the eighty-one fifty and sixty-eight oh eight, total, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a minute, does the eighty-one fifty include that nineteen thousand?
I didn't follow it.
Okay.
No, okay, okay.
Oh, no, it did, it did, I had included it, I had included that, cause I, I, yeah, so that's a separate part of the bill, I, I was just calculating.
I thought it did, yeah, that has to go down. Yes. Yeah, we were just doing the free cash number and not breaking it out for this purpose, all right.
Right, right.
It's only nine thousand. Hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight is what I've come up with, is that sound right?
Is that, is that the right number?
Let's, let's see, so.
All right, say this again.
But those two numbers, one forty-nine, eight, eight, five, eight. Based on eighty-one fifty and cuts and sixty-eight, eight oh eight.
It just falls. No, cause the total budget deficit was only eighty-three.
So we're taking out the accounting bill of nineteen thousand as separate, separate. The accounting bill.
Can you, can you find some kind of math?
That's right, that's a separate line.
Okay, okay, I, I know, only minus ten, yep, okay, so the minus ten.
Let's let one person do this, maybe Josh.
I know, yeah, one, one, one person with the correct math numbers.
Great.
Please.
Well, so what, what number are we coming up with, the number?
The number we need to balance the budget, the operating budget always is without.
Well, this is that, that's this eighty, that's the, that's Sandy's, this is Sandy's issue here, this is the eighty-one, no, not the issue, this is Sandy's number, eighty-one, oh, five, oh.
Eighty-one, oh, five, oh, and the deficit was six hundred and eighty-three, two eighty.
Yeah.
Right.
Plus the free cash. Right.
Minus thirty, thirty, four, four twenty-two of new growth.
Minus thirty-three, whatever. Right, yep, and so that difference, the difference between.
Oh, I wasn't doing that, I'm sorry, I was doing the free cash, I was going back to free cash.
Those two things, and one eighty-three is the, the free cash number. Which is gonna be sixty-something.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, eight oh eight.
Sixty-eight.
It still comes up to that, yes.
I wrote that on the right now, first.
Oh, wait, because th- these are just separate articles, cause I was looking at the one for, I could get sixty-eight, eight oh eight, okay.
All right.
And that's why I got the one for sixty-eight.
Yeah, that's what I got, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, all right, yep.
Okay, I'm good, okay, let's roll.
Okay, all right.
Yay.
Now, we have to, we need a motion, uh, for the additional nineteen thousand.
No, we have to first approve this, this needs to be seconded.
We have to approve this.
Oh. Oh, I, I, I forgot what I had, okay.
Okay. Nope.
So.
When it's seconded?
Nope.
Can, can we hand the motion again?
Yes, I would like to put forth Sandy's budget, her amended budget of the minus the six thousand dollars for a total of cuts of eighty-one fifty and usage of free cash for sixty-eight, eight oh eight to total up the amount of the deficit that we need for Article One.
Motion made, second, okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Problem one.
Thank you, Sandy, and Susan, and, and Finance Committee. Now we need a motion for the nineteen thousand, correct?
Yes, we do.
I would like to make a motion to use free cash to cover the audit of nineteen thousand dollars.
Motion made, second, and second, any discussion?
Uh, Katie, would you accept a friendly amendment to that and just say, um, the prior year, uh, FY twenty-two bill for the audit?
Yes. Yep, yes, for FY twenty-two bill.
Yeah.
Okay, is that all right with you, Peter?
Thank you, Heather.
Yes.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, opposed, okay, motion passed.
All right.
What the warrant?
Now, that has to get put on the warrant too, right?
Yep, yes.
So that requires a motion, correct?
Um.
Cause we've, we've opened the warrant, so now, now are we gonna?
Right, we had already put it on the warrant though, using, no, not the warranty, not the nineteen.
The placeholder.
Not the nineteen, just the one oh seven is up.
Not the nineteen.
Right.
All right, so what article would that be, Article Two?
This is actually a four.
Article three, okay, I'd like to make a motion to have that nineteen out of free cash to become Article Three on the warrant.
Second, does it need to be explained any further on the warrant as opposed to just a figure?
It will get explained, yeah.
I'll explain it, yeah.
Okay, so, again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to make a motion to use the, the motion that I, we just passed to use nineteen thousand from free cash um, for the audit from the year twenty, twenty-two fiscal year to be on Article number three on the warrant.
Okay, motion made, second, and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. So where are we now, Sandy?
We still need to add that ten three.
Do we, yeah, under these other articles, should we make, or is wait till the town?
Um, we have to.
No, I don't think.
Change the article that was passed the other night, the one oh seven forty was gonna be taken out of the reserve fund
Yeah, that's a good question.
That has to be taken from free cash as well.
We have no choice, we might as well.
What article?
Yeah, we're, right, no, then we're sort of consenting to it.
Run a vote, about, okay, motion to, to recommend Article Two.
No, one oh seven.
Article Two.
Whatever that is.
We put a forty?
One, that, one hundred, seven dollars and forty cents.
We have to pay the audit.
We have to pay the audit.
Article two.
Oh, the one oh seven forty?
Yeah.
Yeah. We put it forward to the reserve and it has to come from free cash.
Article two is the hundred and seven.
Oh, the hundred and seven is already on, okay.
Yeah, which we also have, we all, we all vote on that too, all right, so, okay, so motion for two and three.
I don't want to.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so motion for Article.
All made.
Hold on, they're making motions over there.
Second.
Whoever's taking these minutes is gonna be, it's gonna be.
Check it out, we'll figure it out. Um, all right, any discussion? All in favor of recommending by unanimous? All right, so when you're doing the warrant, you can say that for Articles Two and Three for the hundred and seven dollars and change
Mm-hmm.
and the nineteen thousand, that FinCom recommends those.
Okay.
As, as does the select board.
Okay.
I think we have to vote on that, but.
Okay.
But let's, let's fix the other article, the, I'd like to amend.
The one oh seven?
Yeah, the article, um, from the, using, taking one oh seven forty from the reserve fund and making it come from free cash account.
Oh, what's the other one?
Okay, the motion's made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Opposed? Motion made.
The recommendations for, any more amendments so we have to vote again?
Well, what are we doing with that ten can, uh?
Motion.
We have to put it on the warrant.
There's another article?
Right, the, just ten thousand, um, from free cash.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't on there, it wasn't on there, correct?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Cause we were gonna use twenty.
Yeah, but was it, it was on that?
We're gonna amend it to ten thousand.
Okay, you know what article it is?
No.
Do we wait this, to, to what the?
All right.
It's in the.
You wanna, yeah, we're gonna have to have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So. I would.
That's okay, because then I'll give you my dry run of my, my awesome thing I have to do.
I would like to make a motion to amend the article.
All right, so we'll, all right, so screw this.
For ten, uh, twenty grand.
Yeah, I just hate to recommend something.
For the engineer, for the town center.
No, like this is a.
It's called engineering.
Nineteen thousand.
The Engineering Corporation for Town Center to amend it to only use ten grand from free cash.
When can we know? Peter, when can we know? Between now and the twenty-sixth.
Do you, we need to say where the other tens come from, okay, motion's made.
Second.
Any discussion? Did you hear that, Heather?
I did hear that, a motion made by Katie regarding the purposes of supporting the consultant bill
Okay. I'm at a time at nineteenth.
For the three sixty pro, pro, uh, projects, because the other ten came coming from ARPA, but that's not, and the motion is not valid.
Okay, any discussion, all right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed?
When does the warrant have to go to print?
Motion carried.
I have to have to legal tomorrow.
Aye.
This is how close we'll be.
All right, then you won't have any, then you aren't gonna have any recommendations from us.
None of them?
No, because you changed the other one now, so we're gonna, we're gonna back off, we'll make all our recommendations.
We want to see it written out.
Yeah, I think we need to see it written.
Okay. Okay.
Things are starting to get a little wobbly.
Okay.
Okay, are we done with the motions other than closing the warrant? Are we done with the motions dealing with the warrant? Nothing else to change or put on?
Do we need to recommend? Recommend?
This morning?
Yeah, recommend the articles, are we gonna leave them blank as well for recommendations and say a common law?
No, I mean.
I think we should do recommendations now.
You're submitted, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to take them one at a time or can we just talk?
To go to a, to make our recommendations.
All, we have what?
Mister Chairman, I would make the motion that the select board
At town meeting about the, uh, the articles.
recommends all articles on the warrant as discussed, you can.
We wanna see them, they, they do it after we got the body on it.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and second, uh, any discussion, did you keep guys here?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion's carried.
I'm an aye, just delayed.
Okay, so we're ready to close the warrant then, right?
We are.
Okay, we'll take, like a motion then, please, please, to close the warrant.
I would like to make a motion to close the warrant for October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Yes, opposed?
Aye.
Was that a, a vote?
No, she's, she's just delayed.
Okay, we don't, all expected to start.
Not quite, not quite, okay.
I can meet on the Monday, too, the seventeen, so.
So, all right.
Can't you?
Yep. Unless I've missed anything, we got the town administration.
I thought you would come back, I was going to.
I have to.
Go ahead, can we have a thirteen, fourteen, seventeen?
No, I mean, we'll get the stuff, okay, okay.
Yes. Yeah, I can.
I could do either as well.
Okay.
Okay.
We still have a couple of things we have to do, guys, okay?
Well, they have to.
They have to close the meeting.
Yeah, you need to adjourn your meeting.
We're going to in one second, um.
Don't let the door hit you, I guess, anyway, right?
We're. Article to October seventeenth, yes, we do. Okay, so we'll have to meet, we can meet in the senior center.
On the seventeen.
On the seventeen.
So that's the Monday.
Yeah.
When in doubt, we have a meeting at this point.
Yeah. Well, that's what I figured, but I, I just figured I would, I would ask, so I know what to point around.
We got the eleventh, we got the fifteenth and the seventeenth.
Fifteen, yeah. The, um, capital plan, the F Y twenty-two to twenty-seven capital plan and for F Y twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's five hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses.
Yay, good, that'll be great.
Capital?
Yeah, on the capital plan, the proposed capital plan for F Y twenty-two to twenty-seven, um, and it was about half a million dollars and we're gonna leave ourselves with about three hundred thousand dollars in for cash.
That's right, so we won't make it. All right, yeah, all right, uh, let's see, eight twenty-two, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Jeff said we have to leave.
No, like I said the last time, I've been thrown out of place of place of business.
No, you're welcome to stay, but I.
Say a little aggression, didn't they?
We, we all want to read last, the other night, we didn't get out here until almost ten o'clock, so.
Um.
I believe it.
Okay, Sandy, the town administrator?
Town administrator report.
Thanks folks, happy, appreciate it.
Happy to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you for all your help.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
So.
So just real quick, the, um, M R I associates has, um, talked with Tony and, uh, you will each be receiving your packets tomorrow by email. Um, there are three candidates that we will be interviewing on October fifteenth. Um, yeah, and you'll have all your information tomorrow. I sug- my suggestion is to do as much research as you possibly can on each one of these candidates so that you have as much in front of you as possible to make an informed decision.
Okay.
When in doubt, Google, no, just.
And I am so looking forward.
What? You love this, every second.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any, uh, questions, um, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, no, I'll just, nothing, I'll just come down and print the stuff for you, the packages.
Yeah, cause isn't his email all screwed up, don't?
Then I'll, then I'll open tomorrow.
Is he reviewing it?
No, but it's easy for me to read from paper than it is to be dealing with a computer.
Okay.
While we're on the subject of the next meeting, can you send out an email to the select board for the upcoming meetings up to and including, um, special town meeting?
All the?
Dates.
You want all the dates?
When the select board is expected to meet, when we're, starting with, the first one would be, yeah, really, that's what it's looking like, I just wanna make serum up to speed.
Sure. Every night.
To get a room. We'll set up a bunk room somewhere.
We got three next week.
Well, that, yeah, that's why she's gonna send out, quick, no.
Eleven, fifteen, seven and Saturday, yeah.
And seventeen, so we, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
So what is that, a Monday?
No.
The eleventh is Tuesday, cause Monday's the holiday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, what is it, August?
Yeah.
Tuesday, Saturday and Monday, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to stack in the salary or something, we'll put it in.
There's no money in the budget.
We should let?
He said we should start that salary, but there's no.
I'll take an I O U, but it doesn't look good in the future either, so.
When I first started on the, uh, board, the select member, we're paying, let's start, really?
Right, one of the first evil things FinCom did was cut him off.
And. Yeah, and we, when we had to, when we, we're facing a serious deficit, we, uh, and town administrator opted to cut the select board salaries.
Yeah. That's right.
Well, if things are good, we can, we can always, uh, put a motion up there and reinstate it.
That's.
It wa- it wasn't a lot, it was like, like a thousand.
No.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, and most towns do that.
Yeah.
We got five hundred around Christmas time, by my, uh, fiscal year, yeah.
It covers your gas. Okay, moving right along.
To your point, yes. Uh, okay, anything else? If not, no, no policies tonight to review, no matters, unanticipated by the chair, public press, nothing, okay, well, motion to adjourn, anyone?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you all for.